Good evening and welcome to a meeting of the Chesapeake School Board. A printed agenda is available in the back of the room if you wish to follow the business items we'll be discussing this evening. Roll call Dr. Smith.
Mr. Elijah Cologne.
Here.
Ms. Malia Huddle.
Here.
Mr. Mike Lamonia.
Mr. Lamonia is in traffic and will be here momentarily.
Mr. John McCormick.
As is Mr. McCormick.
Mr. Norman Poole.
Here.
Mrs. Amanda Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Kim Scott, Vice Chair.
Here.
Mrs. Angie Swiger, Chair.
Here. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Does a superintendent or any board member wish to add or delete an item from the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No items or no amendments to the agenda, but we will need a closed session for personnel matters, legal matters, and contractual matters.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Ms. Scott, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Huddle, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
We will now go into the closed portion of our meeting. I'll ask Vice Chair Scott to read the language to take us into closed session.
Yes, Chair Swiger, I move that the board should convene in closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, Subsections A, 1, 7, 8, and 29, for discussion and consideration of personnel matters, including administrative appointments, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and specific legal matters, and contractual matters regarding the terms and scope of public contracts.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Huddle, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
We are now in closed session. Vice Chair Scott, would you please read the statement to bring us back into open session?
Yes, Chair Swiger, I move that the record shows that the only items discussed in the closed meeting were those specifically cited in the motion to convene into closed meeting, and those lawfully exempted from statutory meeting requirements.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Lamonia, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Dr. Cotton, do you have items resulting from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have some administrative appointments that will require board approval. Dr. Angela L. Isbell, from Director of Elementary School Leadership, School Administration Building, to Chief of Schools, School Administration Building. Mrs. Karen D. Black, from Assistant Principal, Great Bridge High, to Principal, Great Bridge High. Dr. Amanda E. Jones, from Assistant Principal, Oscar Smith Middle, to Principal, Oscar Smith Middle. Just want to point out that her last name is now Turk. She just got married over the weekend, so we'll all have to get used to the new name. Dr. Jennifer J. Morris Hayes, from Coordinator of Mathematics, School Administration Building, to Supervisor of Mathematics, School Administration Building. And Mr. J. Edward Ewing, from Assistant Principal, Chesapeake Center for Student Success, to Assistant Principal at Great Bridge High. All of these to become effective July 1st with board approval.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Ms. Huddle, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Poole, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
If there are no additional items from closed session, are there?
Madam Chair, I do have, thank you, I do have the following individuals who served their first year as administrators during the 24-25 school year, and we would like board approval for them to remain at their current locations for the 25-26 school year. Mrs. Tara H. Amorowitz, we call her Mrs. A to Z, Assistant Principal, Great Bridge Intermediate. Mrs. Niyani C. Battle, Assistant Principal, Georgetown Primary. Mrs. Shamika M. Dido, Assistant Principal, Truitt Intermediate. Mrs. Daphne T. Folsen, Assistant Principal, Cedar Road Elementary. Mr. Christopher J. Giddis, Assistant Principal, Hickory High. Mrs. Danielle A. Green, Assistant Principal, Grassfield Elementary. Mrs. Kristen M. Key, Assistant Principal, Great Bridge High. Mrs. Sonia H. Stevens, Assistant Principal, Grassfield High. And Ms. Courtney B. Stooks, Assistant Principal, Oscar Smith Middle. Thank you.
And you said you need approval for this one?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Lamonia, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Scott, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
We will now move on to the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. For tonight's invocation, we will observe a moment of silence. Afterward, I'll ask Caroline Ambrose, a 5th grade student from Deep Creek Elementary School, to lead us in the pledge. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Caroline, and to your mom for being here tonight, and Principal Canterbury. We appreciate you guys being here, and thank you. Under awards and recognitions tonight, we have one item this evening, recognition of the Chesapeake Council PTA Reflections winners. Dr. Smith?
Thank you very much, Chair Swiger. We are so excited tonight to recognize the outstanding achievement of several students from across our district this evening. Joining us, you will see, the first place winners of the Chesapeake Council PTA's Reflections Contest. The theme of this year's program, Accepting Imperfection, sparked imagination and creativity in school, in our community, and at home, as each student brought forward their own unique interpretation. The students being recognized tonight that you see before you earned top honors in their chosen category at the citywide competition. In addition, several of the students placed at the state level, and we have one of our students who earned honors at the national level. Before we begin, I would just like to thank, we have a couple of representatives here taking time to be with us and help us with the event tonight. We have DeShawna Brown, from the Chesapeake Council PTA. She's the President and Co-Chair of the Reflections Committee. We also have Ally Fogle, who is from the Virginia PTA. She is the Reflections Chair for the state. Thank you so much for being here. All right, the moment you've been waiting for. I would like to ask the winners to take one step forward when your name is called. Let's start out with the dance category. Representing Great Bridge Primary, Savannah Wood. Savannah was also recognized at the state for outstanding interpretation. Next, we have Butts Road Intermediate, Reagan Strong. Reagan was also recognized at the state level for the Award of Excellence. Next, representing Hickory Middle, we have Nina Sigic. And Nina was recognized at the state level with an Award of Merit. Representing Great Bridge Primary, we have a special artist, Serena Chetta. And Serena was recognized at the state level with outstanding interpretation. Ladies and gentlemen, this is from the dance category, let's give them a round of applause. Moving on to the film category, representing Southeastern Elementary, Meridian Gray. And Meridian was honored at the state level with an honorable mention. Representing Butts Road Intermediate, Kaylee Campbell, first place winner, thank you Kaylee. And representing Joliffe Middle, Leila McGee. Leila was also recognized at the state level with an Award of Excellence. And representing Hickory High, Lucia Rinaldi. Lucia was honored at the state level with an honorable mention. Ladies and gentlemen, these are from the film category, please give them a round of Next up is literature. Juliette Ardelin, from Butts Road Primary, was honored at the state level as well with outstanding interpretation. Representing Hickory Elementary, Jamison Estes. Representing Great Bridge Middle, Avica Vikas. Representing Hickory High, Caitlin Yang. And we have a special artist from Southeastern Elementary, Grayson Davis. And Grayson was honored at the state level with an Award of Excellence. Ladies and gentlemen, the literature category. Next up, in the category of music, representing Great Bridge Primary, is Narayan Kemper. We also have, representing Cedar Road Elementary, Fiona Chang. And representing Grassfield High, we have Esther Yuan. Ladies and gentlemen, we have the music category. In photography, representing Western Branch Primary, we have Juliette Fogle. And Juliette was honored at the state level with an honorable mention. We have, from EW Chittam Elementary, Ethan Diet. And Ethan was recognized at the state level with an Award of Merit. Representing Greenbrier Middle, Weston Bowman, one of our first place winners. And we have, representing Grassfield High, Madison Lee, one of our first place winners. And representing Chesapeake Bay Academy, we have a special artist, Leonard Brown III. Leonard was recognized at the state level with an Award of Excellence. Ladies and gentlemen, the photography category. And our last category this evening is visual arts. Representing Butts Road Primary, Rachel Chen. Rachel was honored at the state level with honorable mention. Representing Greenbrier Intermediate, Jacob Forison. Jacob earned an outstanding interpretation at the state level, and an Award of Excellence at the national level. Representing Hickory Middle, Kaylee Landry, one of our first place winners. Representing Grassfield High, Dylan Davis, who also earned a state level Award of Merit. Representing Hickory Middle, we have special artist Bruce Bear Chittick. And Bear earned an honorable mention at the state level as well. As Southeastern Elementary Special Artist, Evan Hung. And Evan earned a state level Award of Merit as well. Ladies and gentlemen, the visual arts winners. Congratulations to all of our winners, thank you for joining us today. And at this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Fogle, and all of the winners Thank you, Chair Swiger, this completes my item.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Tonight, we have two public hearings in addition to the time allotted for hearing of citizens. We will begin with the public hearing on the school board vacancy. Dr. Smith, are there any citizens who requested time to speak under this public hearing this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have 23 citizens signed up to speak under the public hearing for the school board vacancy.
Thank you. I want to thank those speakers who have signed up to address the board this evening. As a reminder, there are two ways that citizens can request time to speak at our meetings. You can call the clerk's office before 12 noon the day of the meeting, or you can sign up to speak prior to the start of the meeting in person. All in-person requests to speak must be submitted to the deputy clerk five minutes prior to the published meeting's start time. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Once your allotted time is over, we ask that you promptly exit the podium. You may choose to sit in the boardroom if seats are available, but standing or sitting on the floor will not be permitted, and you may not block the exit doors. We would also like to ask that you refrain from any behavior that disrupts the meeting, including the use of profanity, applause, cheering, or jeering. Dr. Smith, please call the first speaker.
Yes, I'd like to call Speaker Number One. You'd have a yellow ticket. If you'd please come to the podium, state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nicole Davis, and I represent the City of Chesapeake. Dear esteemed members of the Chesapeake School Board, I am deeply honored to stand before you to submit my nomination to the Chesapeake School Board. This is more than just a role for me. It's a calling born out of my unwavering belief in the power of education to transform the lives and uplift communities. Our schools are the heart of our community, shaping the minds, dreams, and futures of our children. I am passionately and committed to ensuring that every student in every classroom is seen, supported, and empowered to succeed. I believe that strong, inclusive schools build strong, thriving communities, and I'm ready to work tirelessly to make that vision a reality. Throughout my experience in leadership coaching at Spelman College, parenting two Hickory High School graduates, serving as Ms. Virginia 2024, and community service in my local church and sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, I have witnessed both the challenges we face as a community, and the incredible potential we hold within our schools. I understand the challenges facing Chesapeake Public Schools, funding, overcrowding, safety, and staff behavior due to perceived discrimination and disrespectful treatment of students. If given the honor to serve, I will bring heart, integrity, and relentless energy, just as I have for the past 25 years, serving the U.S. Navy as a lean Six Sigma Master Black Belt, successfully leading transformative, continuous performance improvement initiatives across the department. Together, we can create a future where every child feels that they belong, where innovation is embraced, and where excellence is not just a goal, but a guarantee. Thank you for considering my nomination. I am ready to serve, lead, and stand up for our children's future with deep respect and enthusiasm. Nicole D. Davis, Ph.D., H.C. Thank you.
Speaker Number Two, we'd like to invite you to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Good evening, I am Sherri Murphy Johnson, a resident of Chesapeake. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on my behalf of my interest in joining the school board. As an educator for over 10 years, and a current administrator in a neighboring district, I understand the importance and responsibilities that come with holding a position of such high esteem. My career in education has given me firsthand experience with the challenges and triumphs of both students and educators, and what they face daily. I am passionate about public education, and I believe that all students, regardless of their background, deserve access to high-quality, equitable, and a supportive learning environment. I feel that I could bring real value to the board, not only through my educational knowledge, but also by bringing diversity of thought, experience, and representation. Our student population is wonderfully diverse, and it is vital that their voices, and those of their families, are reflected in the leadership and decision-making processes that impact their daily lives. I want to be a board member who listens, who seeks input, and who advocates for all students, especially those who have been historically underrepresented. I understand that this role is not just symbolic, it is active and demanding. It requires setting and refining policies that guide the district, ensuring the safety and well-being of all students and staff across the 45 schools in Chesapeake, and being a responsible steward of the district's finances. Every dollar in our budget should be used wisely to support instruction, maintain our facilities, and invest in our teachers and support staff. Equally important is the relationship between the school board and the superintendent. I look forward to the opportunity to collaborate closely, to offer support, and to hold leadership accountable to the highest standards. And finally, I am deeply committed to helping bridge the gap between the school system and the community it serves. I believe in transparency, open communication, and building trust with students, parents, and local stakeholders. I also take an active interest due to the fact that I am a proud parent of a 1st grade superhunted at Deep Creek Central Elementary. Everyone in the Tide Water area knows that the Chesapeake school system is among the best in the state. I would love the opportunity to help keep that standard held high. In closing, I hope to bring a balanced perspective, grounded education, experience, compassion, and commitment to educational excellence for every student in Chesapeake. Thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Speaker Number Three, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
My name is Ramesh Kapoor, I live in the City of Chesapeake. Good evening, Chair Swiger, Vice Chair Scott, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Cotton. My name is Ramesh Kapoor, and I come before you not just as a candidate, but as a lifelong public servant, a proud Chesapeake resident, and someone deeply committed to the success of every student in the district. For three decades, I have led major innovation efforts across Hampton Roads in both local government and public education to bridge our communities into the frontier of technology. The last two decades of my work experience at Virginia Beach City Public Schools were exclusively dedicated to delivering student-focused outcomes enabled by digital learning environments created under my leadership. I believe that the insights gained from working with and listening to the administrators, educators, parents, teachers, and students at Virginia Beach will help me in my role as a member of the Chesapeake School Board to advance the mission of Chesapeake Public Schools. One area where I believe I can add real value is in helping the district navigate the growing impact of artificial intelligence in education. AI is already changing the way students learn through personalized instruction, virtual tutoring, and smart learning platforms that adapt to individual needs. With thoughtful implementation, AI can help close learning gaps, support our teachers, and better prepare students for future careers. However, we must proceed carefully. Safeguarding data privacy, maintaining transparency, and ensuring AI enhances rather than replaces the human connection at the heart of education. Throughout my career, I have balanced innovation with responsibility and can help us move forward confidently. In every role, I have built coalitions, led with integrity, and delivered results. I understand public service. I respect this board's work, and if appointed, I will serve with energy, humility, and unwavering focus on our students' success. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for considering me for this position. Thank you.
Next up is Speaker Number Four, who may be a no-show, I just want to double-check, is Mr. Tyler Borrego here with us today? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to Speaker Number Five. It's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Heath Jones, I'm a lifelong member, excuse me, lifelong resident of the City of Chesapeake, also a graduate of Oscar Smith High School, home of NFL Hall of Famer Kenny Easley, and the five-time Virginia State Champion, Oscar Smith Football Team. I am proud to be here tonight to speak in front of you in support of my friend Daniel Stoller for Chesapeake School Board. I've known Daniel for over 20 years and worked with him for over 12 of those 20 years. During that time, I've had the opportunity to see his leadership skills, his steady judgment, and deep commitment to the people of our great city. I'm proud to not only call him friend, but also consider him my brother. Daniel holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in executive leadership. These credentials show both subject matter expertise and leadership participation. Daniel's experience in public safety is unmatched. His 25 years with the Chesapeake Sheriff's Office gives him tools and perspective needed to make smart, effective decisions when it comes to keeping our schools safe. He understands the importance of creating a secure learning environment where students and teachers can both thrive. Daniel is not just qualified, but he's passionate about making a difference. I trust him completely to be a strong advocate for our schools, our families, and our future. Thank you.
Speaker Number Six, it's your turn at the podium. I'd also like to invite Speaker Number Seven to the front row, so that way we can keep our speakers moving. Thank you.
Good evening, Chesapeake School Board, I'm Wendy Ireland, I am from Chesapeake, Virginia. My husband and I moved here in 2019 for the same reason that so many people moved to Chesapeake for, it was for the schools. We have been thrilled, and with our experience so far, we're so happy here. Our children are thriving socially, and we are very blessed to be here. I am very passionate about our, you know, here, our city, our schools, and really committed to the success of our students. My background is an active-duty Coast Guard officer and a retired Navy veteran. I've served in the Department of Defense and Department of Homeland Security. I am passionate about our school district. We have so many incredibly talented students, the ones that you saw up here tonight are just incredible, and I want to make sure that that success continues for all the years, for beyond, you know, when my daughters graduate. We've, you know, we're very fortunate here to have such a wonderful program, and I want to be a part of that success in the future. So, I am committed to and dedicated to this effort, you know, I want to make sure that all of our students are successful. I'd like to see our schools, you know, as one of the other candidates said, we're probably one of the, we're one of the best in the region, and I want to make sure that it stays that way, because that's why so many people come here. Our children are, you know, we build success. So, I'm looking forward for the opportunity to join your team, and I hope that you'll consider my application as one of your board members. Thank you.
Speaker Number Seven, it's your turn at the podium. I'd like to invite Speaker Number Eight to the front row.
Good evening, my name is Bonnie Coffey, and I live in Chesapeake. As a parent with a child in the Chesapeake Public School System, I'm proud to speak today on behalf of someone who embodies what it means to serve with integrity, purpose, and heart. Daniel Stoller spent 25 years serving the community through the Chesapeake Sheriff's Office, retiring as a respected sergeant. His career in public safety gave him more than just leadership experience, it gave him a deep, practical understanding of how to keep our schools safe, and how to respond when crisis strikes. When he talks about school safety, he speaks with experience, not theory. Dan isn't just a public servant, he's a lifelong learner. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's in executive leadership. That combination of frontline experience makes him uniquely qualified to lead throughout thoughtfully and effectively. Education isn't just a policy topic for Dan, it's a family tradition. His two brothers, sister, and their spouses, and his own daughter are all educators. He's seen firsthand what teachers go through. He understands their challenges, their sacrifices, and their passion, because he's lived it through people he loves. And like so many of us, Dan is a parent. His daughter graduated from Chesapeake Public Schools and now teaches in Virginia Beach. His son is currently a junior in the Chesapeake Public School System. Dan talks about the future of our schools, when Dan talks about the future of our schools, it's not political, it's personal. He wants the very best for every student, because he's walking that journey himself. Dan is focused on what truly matters, keeping our students safe, expanding mental health resources, and creating an environment resources, and creating an environment where teachers and staff are supported and respected. He's committed to keeping classrooms focused on learning, not political distractions. He also believes in giving every student a pathway to success. Whether it's college, a trade, or straight into the workforce, Dan is a strong advocate for expanding Chesapeake's Career Center and offering more hands-on learning opportunities. Dan wants, what sets Dan in is his calm, balanced, and steady leadership. He's not looking for headlines, he's focused on results. With his background in law enforcement and leadership, he brings a practical, common-sense approach to solving problems. I know this firsthand because he was my sergeant in the courthouse in keeping us all safe. At the end of the day, Dan isn't a politician. He's a parent, a neighbor, and a dedicated public servant who wants to see Chesapeake Public Schools stay strong, safe, and centered on the student's success. Let's support someone who's in this for the right reasons. Let's support Daniel Stoller. Thank you.
Speaker number eight, it's your turn at the podium, and I'd like to invite speaker number nine to the front row.
My name is Brian Cuffey. I'm from the city of Chesapeake. I had created this letter to write about Mr. Stoller, but I'm gonna just shoot it from the cuff. Daniel Stoller and I have worked together for many years in law enforcement in the city of Chesapeake, and I consider him a mentor. Currently, I sit as the chair on the board of directors over at CIBH, and when I have questions, I go to Mr. Stoller. When I started my education career at Liberty University, I followed behind Mr. Stoller. When we had emergency situations at the courts, we had terroristic threats, I looked to Stoller. And now, having the opportunity to come up here and speak about him, it is something that I cannot share and express how happy I am that he has the opportunity to continue to serve this city as he has. And one other situation I would like to share about Mr. Stoller, where a year ago, he was at my home in the city of Chesapeake, and we had a pool party in the backyard, and one parent brought their adult son with disabilities over. To all of our surprise, within a couple minutes, they were drowning in the pool. Now, a lot of us, you know, we say that we'll react to a situation, we'll do this, we'll do that, but a lot of us stood, and Daniel Stoller acted. He jumped in that pool and saved that person, and they are alive today because of his actions. So I think if we could take the time to consider his background, his public service, and the way he responds to emergencies, that you will find that he is a beautiful and well-equipped candidate for the school board. Thank you.
Speaker number nine, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence. And speaker number 10, I'd like to have you come to the front row.
Good evening, members of the Chesapeake Public Schools, School Board, educators, parents, students, and community members. My name is Andrea Giddings Bolden, and I am a resident in the city of Chesapeake. I am a recently retired special education teacher, having served for 33 years in Chesapeake, teaching and leading at Oscar Smith High School and Truitt Middle School. Yes, there was a Truitt Middle School. I am a parent of two Millennium graduates, both of whom matriculated from kindergarten at Deep Creek Central through 12th grade at Hickory High School and Grassville High School. While teaching, I also served as a member of our PTA. It is my hope to, excuse me, it is my hope to continue and enhance the collective approach to serve our students and schools. While teaching at Oscar Smith High School, I led our education association representing classified and non-classified employees. I understand the need of our faculty and staff. In addition to being a voice for Chesapeake Public School staff locally, I also represented Suffolk and Portsmouth educators as the district end president on the board of the Virginia Education Association. It is my hope that as a member of our board to bring my experience to continue to advocate for the needs of our faculty and staff to enhance their service to our community's children and parents. As a parent of a child who receives special education services in Chesapeake, I personally understand the emotional tax that one can experience while navigating the terrain of suspected disability, the evaluation, child study, and transitional services. It is my hope to represent that voice of those parents also, who have our most vulnerable population. It is my hope, as a member of our school board, to facilitate in the process with a strong parent voice in alignment with the 1990s Individuals with Disabilities Act. And of course, as with any proud parent, my husband and I can say that both of our children are currently in a doctoral program. I currently serve as chair of the Social Action Committee for the Chesapeake, Virginia Beach Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. As the chair, I have collaborated with members of our community to host bipartisan forums, coordinated voter registration, and inform elected officials of the late, excuse me, on the late, on the local, state, and national level about the needs of our community, especially regarding the needs of our city's children. As a former member of the Women's Division Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce, I understand that a strong school system leads to a strong workforce. And in that note, I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 10, it's your turn at the podium, and I'd like to invite speaker number 11 to the front row.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexandra Stoller, and I grew up in Chesapeake with my dad and my little brother Max. I graduated from Grape Bridge High School and earned my associate's degree at the TCC on Cedar Road. I am currently an English teacher at Corporate Landing Middle School in Virginia Beach. But teaching can be a mentally taxing profession, and my older coworkers and my principal always tell me to find my why. When I'm asked that question, I think back to my dad, Daniel Stoller, who is currently sitting in this room cheering me on as he always has. My dad is a constant in my life and has been a pillar in the Chesapeake community for as far as my memory can go back. He was a sergeant for the Chesapeake Sheriff's Department for 25 years before he retired and continued to serve his community in any way he could. My brother and I can tell you that no matter where we would go, there is always a person who remembers my father as a kind face and a helpful hand. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of my father and why I believe he is a worthy candidate for the Chesapeake School Board from my unique perspective as his daughter and a professional in the education field. Dad would drive me to and from school a lot. Whenever he would drop me off at school, he would sing the phone number song with me. We would sing through all the emergency family numbers I needed to know in case of an emergency. The phone number song shifted as I got older, but my safety was always the top priority. When I got home from school, my father would always remind me that my academics came before anything else, and he followed through on his words when he went back to college and earned his master's degree from Liberty University. My father was an academic role model to me as he stayed up late nights exhausted as he completed essays and assignments while holding a full-time job and co-parenting to raise my brother and me. My father also encouraged his children's extracurriculars. Now, my sports prodigy father was probably a little shocked when I came up to him with an orchestra flyer pointing at a viola, but he still spent the next few years making sure that I could do orchestra. Meanwhile, my brother joined countless little leagues and recreation sports teams and is now a proud member of Grape Bridge High School Football Team and ROTC. My father was there for every single event. I remember being on stage and seeing my father awkwardly scooting his way through the aisles after he rushed from work to come see me perform. My brother remembers dad driving him to games blasting hype songs through the radio. My father is the most intelligent, kind, and competent person I know. He has never let a challenge stand in his way. From the perspective of a teacher, he is a model parent who looked after his children and teachers who educate them. And from the perspective of a daughter, he is compassionate yet firm, always making sure Max and I are happy and well-looked after. If he can do all of that for my brother and me, then there is not a single doubt in either my mind or the minds of those who have had the privilege of knowing.
Thank you. Speaker number 11, it's your turn at the podium, and speaker number 12, if you've come to the front row.
Good evening. My name is Richard White. I'm a lifelong Chesapeake resident, also a parent of a child that's in the school system right now. But I stand before you tonight to speak in support of Daniel Stoller for the school board. I've had the privilege of knowing and working alongside Dan for over 20 years, and I can tell you, his dedication to service, leadership, and integrity is unmatched. Daniel has dedicated his life to public service. He's a veteran of the U.S. Navy and a 25-year retired deputy sergeant of the Chesapeake Sheriff's Office. This man has literally spent his life serving and protecting the community. I've seen firsthand his commitment to public service and safety, and I have the utmost confidence that he would bring that same level of vigilance to you in the care of our schools. He's a father, a public servant, a friend, a brother, a mentor, and a leader who listens. If you want someone who will prioritize school safety, advocate for students, and lead with experience and heart, Daniel Stoller is clearly the right choice to sit on the board with you. Thank you so much for listening, and thank you for your time and what you guys do.
Speaker number 12, it's your turn at the podium. I'd like to invite speaker number 13 to the front row.
My name is Daniel Stoller. I live in the city of Chesapeake, and I'm seeking to fill the vacancy on the school board. Again, my name's Daniel Stoller. I've called Chesapeake home for nearly 30 years. It's where I raised my children, just like many have in this room. Education runs deep in my family: my two brothers, my sister, their wives, their husbands, all teachers, including my daughter. A proud graduate of Chesapeake Public Schools and Old Dominion University, and now teaching English. My son is a rising junior in our high schools and is active in both ROTC and football. I've been an orchestra dad, drama club dad, football dad, ROTC dad. I've seen firsthand just how much schools can shape our kids and how important it is to support them in every step of their way. After serving in the Navy, I spent 25 years with the Chesapeake Sheriff's Office, retiring as a sergeant in 2021. While serving, I earned my bachelor's degree in criminal justice, master's degree in executive leadership, giving me a strong blend of practical and academic experience. Having said that, school safety is my utmost priority. Ensuring school safety is a non-negotiable necessity. Our children must feel safe and supported to truly thrive. I'm committed to strengthening our safety measures and ensuring that every child feels protected, safe, and valued. I also believe in deeply supporting our educators and staff so that we can attack, attract quality professionals, retain staff, because our teachers, support staff, bus drivers, they're the heart of the school system. They're the biggest reasons why families like mine come to the city of Chesapeake. Academically, I will work to raise our standards while supporting the expansion of the Chesapeake Career Center. Every student deserves opportunities, whether they choose a college, trade, military, or something else. We need to meet them where they are and help them reach their full potential for lifelong success. And as a God-fearing father, I understand the deep concern that comes with being a parent. I'll always advocate for parental rights and ensure that families have a strong voice in our schools. Because for me, this isn't about a title, it's a parental passion. Just five months ago, nearly 42,000 members of this community placed their trust in me with our vote for school board. That support humbles me, and I would be honored to serve and continue to earning that trust every single day. So I want to thank you all for the school board, for allowing not only me, but everybody to speak to you all on this behalf to fill this vacancy, and thank you to everyone here tonight that believes in the power of public education. Thank you.
Speaker number 13, it's your turn at the podium. I'd like to invite speaker 14 to the front row.
Bryson Moran, and I'm a lifelong resident of Chesapeake. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a senior at Deep Creek High School. As you know, Dr. Walker's seat is being vacated. I'd first like to offer my best wishes to Dr. Walker. Her leadership and dedication has been appreciated by many, including myself. Now we have the important responsibility of ensuring that her seat is filled by someone equally committed and qualified to serve our school district. I believe that person is Mr. Daniel Stoller. I first met Mr. Stoller after attending the State of the Schools Breakfast, where I was inspired by the incredible work happening across Chesapeake schools. During our conversation, he shared his vision for the future of our education system, and I knew right away he is exactly the kind of leader our district needs to keep moving forward. Mr. Stoller brings over 25 years of experience with the Chesapeake Sheriff's Office, some of which he led as a sergeant. His career reflects a deep commitment to public service and an even deeper commitment to this community. His priorities are enhancing school safety, supporting teachers and staff, and expanding mental health resources, which directly addresses the real needs we face today. And as a student, I can tell you, safety is not optional. If we don't feel safe, we cannot focus, we cannot thrive. His dedication to creating a secure, supportive environment will have a lasting impact. Education runs deep in Mr. Stoller's family. His two brothers, his sister, their spouses, and even his own daughter are all educators. His son is currently a student in one of our high schools. That kind of connection matters. It means he understands the day-to-day realities of what our students and teachers go through, not in theory, but in real life. He also holds a master's degree in executive leadership from Liberty University, showing not only his experience, but also his commitment to growing as a leader and making thoughtful, informed decisions. If you were at the State of the Schools Beach, you heard Dr. Cotton speak about building a bridge between our community and our schools. Well, I'm standing here tonight to tell you that Mr. Daniel Stoller is the person we need on the school board to help continue building that bridge. At the end of the day, this isn't about party lines or politics as usual, it's about doing what's right for our students, for our families, and for the future of Chesapeake. When we face, when we focus on what truly matters: quality education, safe communities, and a real opportunity, we move beyond division, we come together. That's not a partisan idea, that's a Chesapeake value. That is the Chesapeake way. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Speaker number 14, it's your turn at the podium, and I'd like to invite speaker 15 to the front row.
One of the hard things about being speaker number 14, people take everything that you're gonna say, and so I want to echo. First, I want to just thank everyone who's come out tonight and who's applying for this great position. It is not in a, you all are not in the easiest of seats at the moment because it's a lot of hard decisions that you all have to make, but thank you for what you all do every day. I'm here today to talk about Mr. Dan Stoller. Forty-two thousand, zero, zero, one people voted for Dan Stoller, and I consider myself to be the number one at the end of the forty-two thousand. Dan Stoller, you know, he's got a lot of accolades, and you know, he's with the Sheriff's Department, and safety's always a big thing. You know, when dealing with the school system, I do think that there needs to be a diversity of thought, diversity of mindset. I don't think we need all educators, I don't think we need all people who are just from the business sector. I think we need people with very different, differentiation of mindset. Hopefully, there's a school board member that may be going to the House of Delegates soon, and so hopefully, we'll be able to replace that one with someone who is into security, so we won't lose the security aspect. But I will tell you this, Dan Stoller is very genuine, and I know you're gonna hear a lot about the political things, but the one thing I do, I will say about Dan Stoller, he's very genuine. And if you do not know anything about Dan Stoller, he has a very, he has a heart of service, heart for the people, and heart for leadership. And that's something that you don't really find in too many people who are running for office these days or who are considered into these positions. I will say this, out of the, you know, watching him during this campaign season and just watching him and just, you know, observing him, the genuineness that I do believe that he possesses is what's needed in our current government these days. And I know that, you know, we have differences of opinion on things, and, you know, we can all talk about, you know, this side and this side. At the end, at the end of the day, I do believe all of you bring a consensus together, and I think with Dan Stoller, he's gonna bring that consensus in from another perspective, and it's gonna be very genuine. It's, you know, his genuineness is gonna be pervasive, and all the parents, and when he goes to visit the schools, they will all see that. And I think that's somebody that I would want to represent me. You know, there are a lot of great people, and I applaud everyone, but he'd offered himself for service. He offered himself, he went to- He offered himself, he went to the civic leagues, we went to the, went to the, to the teachers, he went to the parents and spoke to them, looked them in the eye and said, this is what I'm going to do for you. And so I really pray and hope that we can, that we can make the right decision on this, on this, this matter, and I'm here to speak in support of Dan Stoller. Only he could get me out on a Monday at night before I travel, so thank you all so very much.
Speaker number 15, it's your turn at the podium, and speaker number 16, if you'll come to the front row.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Mark Higgins, I am a resident of Chesapeake. I'm honored today to speak on behalf of Wendy Ireland for the vacant position on the board. Wendy and I have shared interests and histories. We are both Coast Guard officers, we're both Coast Guard Academy graduates, we both worked for the Army Corps of Engineers, and we both are passionate about scouts. First, I'm going to give you a little bit of my background, then share some of the background that Wendy and I have together, and then explain why Wendy would be an excellent candidate for your board. I am the son of two educators. My father was a professor at the University of Massachusetts, my mother was a special education teacher. I am a Coast Guard Academy graduate, I'm a law school graduate, and I've taught at the Coast Guard Academy. I taught criminal justice, maritime law enforcement, constitutional law, and international law. In fact, I asked Wendy today whether she was a cadet when I was there teaching, and she was. However, I was teaching juniors and seniors, and she was a freshman and sophomore. So I also want to talk a little bit about my family, when we moved to Chesapeake, why we moved to Chesapeake, and what we've done since we've been here. I came to Chesapeake in 2009 to be the staff duty advocate for Coast Guard Atlantic Area. We were looking for where the best schools were, so we ended up in Chesapeake. We considered Grassfield, Hickory, and Grape Bridge, and we ended up in Grape Bridge because it was the most community feeling for us, and we rented a house where the kids could walk to three different schools. One was in intermediate, one the middle school, and one in high school. They have all graduated from Grape Bridge High School, two is valedictorian, one went on, is working currently on his PhD, the other is graduating this week. The third graduated from University of Florida, got her master's degree in education, and is now teaching at Hickory High School in science, with both biology and chemistry. She was offered another job from another district, but chose to come to Chesapeake and learn chemistry, although she was a biology undergraduate major, and to get that position. So I'm going to move on to what Wendy and I have done together and kind of talk about three different things. First, the Coast Guard. The Coast Guard is a passion. When I went to work for the Army Corps of Engineers, they told me I could no longer say "we" when I was talking about the Coast Guard. It is fundamental that your motto is "semper paratus," which is always ready, which is what Wendy is. We have core values, honor, respect, and devotion to duty, and that is what she embodies. I have 44 years of federal service, combined between the Army Corps of Engineers and Coast Guard, and I'm very proud of that. When I first met Wendy was when I was working in the Officer Council with the Army Corps of Engineers. She came on as an emergency management specialist, working for emergency operations, and from a Coast Guard background, the emergency operations people are the most-
Thank you, the three minutes are, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Speaker number 16, it's your turn at the podium, and speaker number 17, if you'll please come to the front row.
Good evening, Chair Spiegert, Vice Chair Scott, members of the school board, Dr. Cotton, and members of the superintendent's cabinet. My name is Thomas Rodriguez Shucker, I reside in the South Norfolk area of Chesapeake. I'm here tonight to kind of give you a background of who I am and why I would like to be considered as a candidate to fulfill the vacant position. This district isn't just where I grew up and went to school, this is where I got my start and found out who I was meant to be. I'm a proud graduate of Chesapeake Public Schools, and more specifically, Oscar Smith High School, class of 97. As a student, I was involved in many clubs, organizations, athletics, ROTC, orchestra, and student council. Chesapeake Public Schools is where my journey in public service began. Standing up for my peers, finding my voice, and more importantly, learning how to bring people together to make change. Chesapeake Public Schools gave me the education, it gave me a purpose. It taught me discipline, leadership, teamwork, and the power of serving something greater than myself. Those early lessons have become the blueprint of who I am today. I began my career as a seventh grade social studies teacher in Hurford County, North Carolina, where I was also a college prep coordinator, and later an assistant principal. I went on to teach college courses in economics, everybody's favorite, algebra, and research methods, and always reminding myself that education absolutely can transform lives. Today, I serve as president of a national public health consulting firm, where I lead multi-jurisdictional programs that improve health outcomes, enhance community health, and most importantly, design programs and interventions to help end the HIV epidemic in the United States. In my journey through public health and education, I've always remembered where I got my beginnings. In fact, I recently served on the City of Chesapeake's Commission for Health and Well-Being, where I helped to expand access to mental health resources and services, strengthen family engagement, and help build stronger, healthier, more connected communities. Now I'm pursuing my doctorate in public administration, not because I need more credentials, because I want to serve smarter, I lead stronger, and make a greater impact on my community. I'm not here just to simply fill a seat, I'm here because I believe Chesapeake Public Schools deserves leaders who are deeply invested in students' futures. I believe students, I believe in a centered student, student-centered solutions, strategic thinking, and a school board that reflects the community in which it serves. Being considered for this position would be kind of my homecoming, and it would be the greatest honor of my life to give back to the community in which gave me so much. To help every student recognize the opportunity to discover their purpose, their passions, just like I did. I believe in the transformative power of public education. I believe in a servant leadership grounded in experience and compassion, and I believe in our students, every single one of them.
Thank you.
So thank you tonight.
Speaker number 17, it's your turn at the podium. I'd like to invite speaker number 18 to the front row.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Julian Parcell. I too am a lifelong resident of Chesapeake. Our children were raised in the Chesapeake Public School Systems, just like I was from Oscar Smith, then from Hickory, and also served 35 years in the Chesapeake Sheriff's Office. For five out of those 35 years, I had the pleasure of serving side by side with Dan Stoller. He and I both carried the rank of sergeant. He and I, along with two other sergeants and a lieutenant, supervised a correctional platoon. The responsibility for supervising that platoon encompassed 44 sworn staff and roughly anywhere between 900 to over 1,000 inmates. During the course of the time that Dan and I served together, Dan exhibited a very professional, very competent demeanor. He set a high bar for himself, had very good work ethics. He was easy to approach, the staff had no difficulty speaking with him. And you have to have a good interpersonal communication skill to work in that environment, otherwise you're going to fail. That interpersonal communication skill was displayed and carried in his communication and interaction with the inmates, regardless of what was going on. When we had difficult times, and the pleasantries were over, and it moved to sometimes hands-on, where institutional or criminal charges could be secured against an inmate, depending on the nature of the situation, and he was involved in the investigations. The one thing about him that was a real benefit for everybody involved, because I was in investigations with him as well, he kept a very open mind, very conscientious, looked at all the evidence, made sure that the decisions for whatever disciplinary actions were taken were fair and fit the offense. And the reason I'm bringing that to your attention is because this man will carry those same virtues and attributes into the position on the school board, and they will also reflect in the way he wants our students to be cared for, and helping them to have a positive direction and all the support that our public school system needs to bring to our children. Thank you.
Speaker number 18, it's your turn at the podium. Speaker 19, if you'll come forward to the front row.
Hi, I am Dr. Jeannie Tardif. I am a current resident of Elizabeth City, North Carolina. However, I am a former resident of Chesapeake and Portsmouth. I serve as the department chair and professor of early childhood development at Tidewater Community College. In my career, I've worked with every age, from infancy all the way to age 69, which is pretty cool to go to college at 69. I've had a lot of experience over the 25 years I've been in education. Part of that is working with public school systems. I've worked in the capacity of serving on steering committees, of being in partnership with several of the public schools for my student teachers at TCC. I've also worked with career planning development specifically many times here in Chesapeake. And I say that, I'm going to stop talking about me now, but because I feel it's important to know that my endorsement comes from a place of being in education and serving in different areas of education. So, in my early years of teaching, I worked with young children. And when I took my job here in Hampton Roads as a professor, as you can guess, I miss children deeply. Children and adults in college are, they're kind of the same, but anyways. So it was really good timing when I was approached by Mrs. Amanda Raymond to serve as her respite care provider for her two children with special needs. At the time, they were ages seven and 11, both with a diagnosis of autism. They have been in the Chesapeake Public School System, and now they're 19 and 22. But with that time, I spent many hours in their household, watching her be a mother, an advocate, a PTA member, a Navy wife. And so I will tell you that she is extremely knowledgeable and experienced in working with children and educators in special needs. However, she offers more than that. She offers not just the perspective of a parent with children with special needs, but of something very unique to our area, that of the military family. Not only is she a veteran of the US Navy, but her husband is a veteran of the US Navy. So she understands the very unique circumstances of a family from the military faces when they're here with us in Hampton Roads. She has worked so tirelessly over the years to support not only children, but families with children with special needs. And over the years, she has grown in all of her knowledge, she has become an active part of the school district. She knows so many people from her conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number 19, it's your turn at the podium, and speaker 20, if you'll come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cotton and division staff. My name is Amanda Raymond, and I'm a resident of Chesapeake. I stand before you not just as a person seeking the vacancy for the school board, but as a passionate parent and advocate for all students and educators within our division. As many of you know, I have strived to be a champion for our students with disabilities and their families, previously serving on our Special Education Advisory Committee and advocating as a private citizen. Our schools must be places where every student, regardless of ability, has the tools and supports that they need to thrive. This means investing in individualized instruction, expanding access to specialists, and creating classrooms where differences are not just accepted but celebrated. Every child deserves to be seen, heard, and empowered. Our focus should also be on ensuring that our teachers have the resources, training, and support that they need to meet the needs of all their students. It's impossible to ignore the challenging education landscape that we are faced with today, and I look for it as an opportunity to think outside the box, utilize our resources creatively, and ensure that each teacher can effectively support their students. Shelley Moore is a teacher, researcher, consultant, and storyteller who used bowling to change how we looked at education. In her story, "The ball is the lesson and the pins are the kids." Teachers aim for the middle and do the best they can, but the pins that are left standing are the ones on the outside who represent the kids who need the most support and the kids who need the most challenge. With creative thinking and universal design for learning, think about how we could teach all students by using the supports and strategies aimed to help those who are the hardest to reach. We must engage in conversations that embrace innovative solutions and break down barriers to provide all educators with the tools, training, and flexibility that they require to succeed in meeting the diverse needs of all their students. Education is not a one-way street, it's a partnership, a shared journey between parents and schools. I believe that when parents are treated as partners, students succeed. I believe that by strengthening the bonds between home and school, ensuring that parents are involved in informed decision-making, and equipping them with the information that they need to support their children, we can build a culture of collaboration, transparency, and trust. At the heart of it is servant leadership. I'm here to listen to parents, families, and students to help provide a voice for those who often feel overlooked. I will embrace this responsibility with humility, guided by the needs of our students, the voices of our parents, and the expertise of our educators. Leadership is not about holding power, it's about empowering others. I look forward to serving our community and our school division with integrity and dedication. I appreciate your consideration, and I thank you for listening.
Speaker number 20, it's your turn at the podium, and speaker 21, if you'll please come to the front row.
Dear school board members, my name is Cody Gillette, and I am a lifelong resident of Chesapeake. I work over at Trico Elementary School, go Hornets! And I am here to speak on the behalf of Daniel Stoller. I have known Daniel Stoller for the past 25 years, and he has been a part of our family for as long as I can remember. His extensive experience in public safety gives, gives him a practical, informed perspective on school safety and crisis. His primary areas of focus are student safety, expanding mental health resources, and creating a supportive environment for both teachers and staff. With his public safety background and excessive leadership training, Daniel brings a calm, practical, and thoughtful approach to both problem-solving and life. Daniel isn't just a politician, actually, he's not even a politician, but he is a parent, he is a community member and a public servant, who wants to make Chesapeake Public Schools safe, strong, and focused on the students. Having worked in the school system for almost four years now, once at Grape Bridge High School, and now currently at Trico Elementary, I see the day-to-day, I see the parents, the, you know, the students, the teachers, everybody, and we need to rally, we need a school board that will come, help, make changes. I see it every day, and I really think that Daniel has the opportunity to do that, as well as all of you who did such of a wonderful job already. And we thank you from our friends over at Trico Elementary and me, go Hornets! Thank you.
Speaker number 21, it's your turn at the podium. Speaker 22, if you'll come forward.
Good evening, I am Kelly Culver, I'm resident of Chesapeake. I'd like to first start off with thanking our veterans and first responders that are here with us tonight for their service. My connection to this district is personal. We moved from Suffolk to Portsmouth, to Chesapeake in 2019 specifically for the higher-quality schools. My oldest is a graduate of Grassfield High School, and my youngest is currently a student at Grassfield as part of the Junior Air Force ROTC program. I've seen our schools from the perspective of a teacher during my master's studies, as a civilian parent, and as a military-connected parent. I understand the hopes and expectations that we all share for our children. Beyond my personal connection, I bring a wealth of professional expertise. I've dedicated nearly 20 years to the educational field, with the 10 in the classroom, teaching from third to 12th grade, science, math, and social studies. I've witnessed firsthand the transformative power of equality education. During my time as a teacher, I was fortunate to win multiple awards and secured several grants to assist in the funding of programs in the science field of our school. This reflects not only my enjoyment of teaching, but the commitment to learning and excellence in the classroom. But my experience in education wasn't limited to only the classroom. I was able to serve on the curriculum committee and designed professional development sessions for the teachers, ensuring the students have access to a innovative and effective learning experience. I've had the privilege of completing an administrative internship- I've had the privilege of completing an administrative internship and gaining that invaluable insight into the complexities of school management systems. As a lifelong learner, I'm committed to staying abreast of the latest research and practices in education. This love of learning has led me to earn a doctorate in education, administration, and leadership, a master's in education, a master's degree in social work with a clinical focus, a bachelor's in sociology, and a minor in psychology. This combination of experiences has given me a unique understanding to the challenges of our students and our families face every day. My social work background has also made me intimately familiar with the demographics of our area, their challenges, and the resources available to them. Beyond that formal education, I've also actively engaged with our community, volunteering with the PTSA, serving as a scoutmaster, as well as a merit badge counselor, where I had the joy of watching my daughter become one of the very few female Eagle Scouts in this area. This expertise has given me the understanding of the changing dynamics in our society, the profound impacts that these changes are having on our students and our staff. I believe that together, we can help to bring the bright future that this district has to fruition and then some. Thank you.
Speaker number twenty-two, it's your turn at the podium. And speaker twenty-three, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Dr. Mark Willett. I am a resident of Chesapeake, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to unpack what might otherwise be a stuffy academic resume. In addition to being a trained mediator-negotiator, I am actually a fourth-generation educator on the side I never knew, because my father grew up without a father from nineteen forty-four onwards, and they moved. On the side I did grow up with, my mom is the oldest of nine, and I'm the oldest of nineteen grandchildren, a farmer slash auto worker, and the first generation to go to university, including a PhD in English, which is my second language, so I do okay, and the rare math and English K-12 certificate. I was also a switch-hitting shortstop and a grinding hockey player. To this day, I am as comfortable working in the barn as I am in a boardroom, and we've instilled that same work ethic in our two Grassfield student athletes. Knowing the value of hard work has made my career in higher education an easy transition because I research and teach the ways work is central to how boys and girls learn to become men and women, and the role the technology plays in that process. Since moving to Chesapeake in 2016, largely because of the school system, we grew up seven hundred fifty-four miles away, and we read about the Virginia testing bulletins when we were in school. I have received an average of one award or grant per year after nine years before that teaching and winning awards at a top seventy-five global institution, including national, international awards. My work is translated into several languages, taught on four continents. Check my LinkedIn. But as I tell the seven thousand-plus students who've gone through my door, representing over ninety ethnicities and nationalities, those aren't recognition for something I did, they're a promise that this is the level of excellence I always deliver. Because my job is to provide a space where everyone can succeed through transformational learning. That way, all children always benefit. Thank you.
Speaker number twenty-three, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Hi, I'm Michelle Willett from Chesapeake. I'm also known as the Southeastern Elementary Math Fairy. Hi. I'm here to support Dr. Willett and his application for the temporary job opening with the school board, and I think what I wanted to emphasize, in addition to the fact that he is an experienced negotiator and mediator, is that he really understands how to read and interpret acts, how to write and read and interpret policy and apply it equitably and fairly. He's really good in crisis situations, he keeps a very calm head, and he has this incredible wealth of knowledge from thermodynamics to poetry to everything else. And he brings that wealth of knowledge and that experience and that comfort in those difficult situations where you have to make very careful decisions to everything that he does. And I think this is a great opportunity for the board to have access to his wealth of knowledge for that temporary position, and I hope that he becomes a successful candidate. Thank you.
Chair Swiger, this concludes our speakers for the public hearing.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and sharing your comments. Just to give you a brief update on our next steps, we will be taking the next few days to whittle down our list a little bit. We were very, very fortunate to receive a tremendous outpouring of interest in this position. We have forty-four candidates. We're going to be taking the next few days to consider all the comments made tonight, as well as all of the resumes and the letters of interest, and narrowing down that field to five candidates that we will bring in to interview. So, we will be notifying the candidates that we are going to bring in to interview on next Monday, a week from today, and the interviews will take place during the closed session of our next regularly-scheduled board meeting, which is on May nineteenth. And then we will be making a vote at the meeting that follows that meeting. So, please stay tuned. I want to thank you all once again for all of the tremendous interest. We appreciate it, and we know that this decision is going to be very, very tough because we have, again, a tremendous candidate pool to choose from. So, thank you again for being here tonight and for participating in this process. We will now move on to our regular hearing of citizens. Do we have any speakers tonight scheduled for the Hearing of Citizens section for this evening?
Yes, we have one citizen who signed up to speak.
Okay. During their allotted time, speakers should observe our rules of decorum and know that expressions of concerns and criticism on matters of school policy and operations is welcome. While the speaker's own comments are welcome, they may not play prerecorded messages. Dr. Smith, please call our speaker.
It looks like speaker number one is ready. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Good evening, my name is Caitlin Rittenhour, and I'm a resident and educator in Chesapeake. Tonight, I speak on behalf of the more than one thousand members of the Chesapeake Education Association, the local union for all employees in Chesapeake Public Schools. Now is an especially great time to join because we are offering early enrollment, which means that new members can join today and not pay any dues until September. If you're interested in learning more, please speak with your building representative or find us online. D is for diversity. Diversity is recognizing the many, many, many different types of people that collectively comprise our world. It's working with and learning from people who are different from you in background, religion, gender, culture, race, shape, ability, and all the other qualities that make each of us unique. Diversity is celebrating winter holidays, the month of the military child, and Black History Month, which this past year received media attention for how creative, engaging, and thought-provoking student projects became with the support of our fabulous educators. One member put diversity beautifully when she said, "Kids are observant and intelligent and deserve the respect of being exposed to other types of people so that they can ask the hard questions that adults won't." Diversity is how our students learns how special they are and how they can impact the world. E is for equity. Contrary to equality, equity is real fairness, ensuring that everyone gets the supports they need to succeed, even if those supports look different from person to person. This is what our dedicated educators do every single minute of every day. Reading groups, math centers, project-based learning, PowerUp, all-in tutoring, AP courses, electives, and extracurricular activities are all choices we make so that every student gets the most from their education. Our most vulnerable learners get specialized support in their individualized education plans and English language learner classes. The fence that prevents students from achieving their full potential is being knocked down one plank at a time, thanks to equity. I is for inclusion. Inclusion is including others and celebrating what they bring to the table. It's a student who says, "Our new student seems nice. I'm going to invite her to play with me and my friends at recess." It's Braille books in our libraries. For that matter, it's all the books in our libraries that tell the story of someone different from the person standing in front of the shelf. It's the foundation of the least restrictive environment, where students with differing abilities are included in courses and activities with their peers. Inclusion is how we prepare our students for the wonderful life experiences ahead of them. As you can see from these examples, diversity, equity, and inclusion aren't principles that we need to be diminishing or backtracking. They are ones we should be celebrating. Diversity, equity, and inclusion allow all our students and employees to feel like they belong here and to use their talents to move us further into excellence. The members of the Chesapeake Education Association expect a commitment to keeping the door open to everyone and making sure that everyone has a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Our practice is to receive information, however, we do not usually engage in dialogue, and that is our intent tonight. If appropriate and not already provided, someone from the superintendent's staff will evaluate your concern and provide a response. We will now move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Ms. Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cologne. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
We will now move to the information agenda. The first item this evening is an update on the strategic plan. Over to you, Dr. Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Fallon Graham is going to come forward and provide you with an overview of our strategic planning process. As many of you know, we are updating our strategic plan since we are in 2025, which was our previous plan, Empower 2025. And Dr. Graham, it's great to be able to say that today.
Yeah.
Dr. Graham has been working with her team to get feedback from several community members and leaders and staff members from across our district, and she's going to present the culmination of all of those ideas that came forward tonight. We're going to be asking, well, not tonight, but in the future, a future board meeting, the next board meeting, we'll be asking for approval for our strategic plan, vision, mission, and goals, as well as our core values. And Dr. Graham, if you'd present those this evening, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to present to you a draft over our five-year strategic plan, Empower As we finish up this school year, we're also coming to the end of our strategic plan, Empower 2025. Empower 2025 has helped to lead this district through a very transformative period within public education. Under its organized direction and clear vision and mission statements, it has led us through some, in achieving some major milestones in academics, employee supports, safe and supportive environments, and deeper community engagement. Empower 2030 is not a brand-new beginning, it's just the next chapter in our journey that we started five years ago. We're building on that foundation. Empower 2030 is going to be our next iteration. It's rooted in data, driven by collaboration, and focused on impact. It reflects what we've learned, what our community values, and where our students need us to go next. We launched this process last May by conducting a very comprehensive climate survey, where we surveyed our community, our families, students, and staff. We followed up with community focus groups to learn more about what we value here in Chesapeake. Then we brought together action teams for a two-day collaborative workshop, where we dug into the data, we uncovered trends, and we imagined what success could look like in 2030. The workshop was a highly engaging and collaborative experience, where teams, organized by goal, analyzed data, assessed the current state, and imagined what Chesapeake could look like. Through the experience, teams were provided feedback and opportunities to reflect as they participated in a backwards design model, developing success measures first, and then creating initiatives and strategies that would lead us to that ideal future. The team met two more times to revise the draft before bringing it before you today. When you have something that works and works really well, there is no need to change it, and that's why we want to maintain our vision and mission statements. Our vision to inspire, engage, and empower all learners to achieve their highest potential is what we need to be doing each day. And our mission, the Chesapeake Public Schools family promotes educational excellence by engaging all students in meaningful, innovative learning experiences that empower them to successfully fulfill their life's purpose, is why we should be fulfilling our vision. Through a series of focus groups and community engagement efforts, we listen to what matters most to the community of Chesapeake. And based on this feedback, we refined our values to better represent what our students, families, staff, and partners believe in and strive for today. As a result, we're introducing three new values and reaffirming those that continue to resonate with the community. Therefore, our values include creating opportunity, elevating potential, cultivating innovation, modeling integrity, promoting accountability, inspiring excellence, and connecting the Analysis of the survey and focus group responses, as well as data analysis, encouraged us to maintain four goals that were included in Empower 2025, but then add in an additional goal. We're also including an additional component of ownership. Our five goals include our learners, our people, our operations, our well-being, and our community. Now, I'd like to break down each goal and share more specific details included in the plan. At the heart of education is learning, and we believe in learning that is engaging, relevant, and personalized. Our students deserve experiences that prepare them not only for exams, but for life. Goal one ensures that every learner is challenged, empowered, to shape their own future. Inspired Design supports teachers in designing meaningful, engaging classroom experiences. Engaged Learning Experiences promotes real-world, authentic, student-led learning opportunities. And empowered learners build student agency through personalized pathways and flexible learning environments. Great districts are built by great people. Our staff is essential, and when we invest in them, our students benefit. Goal two ensures that we attract, support, and retain exceptional and qualified professionals by offering meaningful growth, recognition, and support during each stage of their career. Recruitment expands outreach, career pathways, and application accessibility. Compensation ensures that Chesapeake Public Schools is a place where people want to work and stay. Retention builds on positive work culture, mentorship opportunities, and recognition. And growth and development provides personalized, innovative, professional development for all Behind every great learning experience is a system that works. This includes safe and modern buildings, efficient transportation, nourishing meals, and a budget to support it. Goal three focuses on creating environments where our students and staff can focus on what matters most, teaching and learning. Facilities improves and modernizes our buildings with sustainability and learning in mind. Transportation streamlines routes, strengthens the workforce, and improves communication. School nutrition will expand access to healthy, nourishing, locally sourced meals and reduce waste. And resource management aligns the budget, grants, purchasing, and data systems to strategic goals. We cannot expect our students to thrive in a classroom when they are struggling emotionally or physically, and we cannot expect our staff to care for others when they themselves are depleted. Goal four recognizes that well-being is the foundation of every success story. Student health and well-being strengthens attendance, mental health, and student activities, while employee health and well-being expands wellness centers, benefits, and work-life balance supports. And safe and secure environments, advanced security protocols, and mental health coordination. Our schools do not exist in isolation, and they rely on the partnership with our community. Goal five is about strengthening those bonds between families, schools, and partners so that every student is surrounded by a strong and supportive network. Strategic communications improves customer service, ADA compliance, and internal messaging and external messaging. And external partnerships develop strong systems for managing donations and volunteers. We are seeking your approval on the vision, mission, values, and goals, and if no major changes are recommended, then we will include the plan in the consent agenda for the next school board meeting on May nineteenth. So now may I answer any questions at this time? Thank you, Dr. Graham, which I agree that is really fun to be able to say that, Dr. Graham. Thank you. I don't have a question at this time. I will open it up to any questions if there are any in just a moment, but I do want
I will open it up to any questions if there are any, just a moment, but I do want to say that, you know, I appreciate your team and all of the folks that have put a lot of effort into this, and to specifically say that there are a lot of organizations, whether it be, you know, school districts or levels of government or businesses, that put a lot of great language into a document like this, but it's not really their guiding force. And I can say beyond the shadow of a doubt that in Chesapeake, that is not the case, and that every decision that the administration makes is guided through the lens of this document. And I've heard it referred back to so many times, so it is important and valuable that we get this right, and it feels right to me, and I'm really happy with where this has continued to evolve. So again, thank you to your team.
Thank you.
I don't believe I see any questions at this time, so thank you.
Thanks a lot.
The next item on the information agenda tonight is the guaranteed maximum price for the elementary school at Culpeper Landing, Ms. Stutz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to spend a minute or two kind of reminding everyone how we got to this place for a guaranteed maximum price for Culpeper Landing, the elementary school in that subdivision. The board approved guidelines for CM@Risk, or CMAR as it's often called, as an alternative procurement method. Most traditional method is designed-to-build. We've done several projects in that manner, but we also have, with the increase in prices, that has become an expensive endeavor doing design-to-build. So we wanted to try some alternative methods for procurement. CM@Risk is one of those that we have undertaken. That process is done, it is competitively negotiated for the architectural firm that's hired, as well as the general contractor that's hired. Once that's done, what happens is the general contractor, the architects, and the new construction department, they get together and work up an initial guaranteed maximum price, and they do that up to the very beginning of design, near 20% or so after design is done. They did that, and the board approved the early guaranteed maximum price on June 10th of 2024, $57.7 million for that building. Fast forward 11 months, the rest of the design of that project has been completed, and where we are now is, again, the architect, the contractor, and of course, new construction have all worked diligently over those last 11 months to get a design that we liked, to get a design that stayed within that monetary value, because there can be scope creep, and there can be things, oh, this looks nice. So we have done a really good job of trying to rein it in as much as we can. So tonight, we have established the final guaranteed maximum price of $56,964,042, which is over $700,000 less than the early price. So that's very positive. So really, kudos for RMM, our architects, SB Ballard Construction Company, and our new construction staff for working diligently to making sure the price was even less than the early price. That doesn't always happen. But again, this is our first endeavor at CM@Risk. So again, there are sufficient funds in the budget for our project, as well as HVAC, the equipment and controls. You will remember, in February, you approved $3 million additional dollars for the project, and that's really to procure furnishings, equipment, those type of items that need to be purchased to lay out the rest of the building. So we're on track, I'm happy to report, and if anybody's been out there, we've actually already started with the early site package, and they're moving around dirt. So that's where we are, but I did want to let you know, particularly since this is the first CM@Risk project we've done, where we came out with the final GMP, and we're moving right along.
I see no questions, Ms. Stutz, so thank you for the report and the update. There are no items on the action agenda this evening, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. May is full of celebrations. May is Jewish American Heritage and Asian Pacific Heritage Month. Also, we're celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week this week, May 5th through the 9th. I do remind folks that we do have our shout-outs, that we're encouraging people to share kudos to our teachers this week. National School Nurses Day is on May 7th. Also, Custodial Appreciation Week is May 12th through the 16th. We look forward to celebrating our custodial team at their appreciation banquet on May 17th at Deep Creek High School. This event is open to the public, and tickets to the event are available for purchase by calling Custodial Services, and of course, I hope to see some of our board members at that event. With that, the month of April has been busy and exciting, with so many amazing things happening across the district. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share some of these things with you tonight in my spotlight. April was the month of the Military Child, and our family community engagement team celebrated by hosting the district's fourth annual Operation Military Families. The event took place at Grassfield High School and allowed for our military-connected families to explore the different resources that are offered to them here in Chesapeake. Families also enjoyed complimentary Life Touch family portraits, music, food, drinks, games, and even bounce houses. Thank you to the FACE team and the Grassfield High School for all of your hard work in making this event happen and for being instrumental in celebrating the month of the Military Child. Schools across the district also celebrated the month of the Military Child by participating in Purple Up Day. Students and staff put on their purple to show support for their classmates and their families, who are connected to the armed forces, with purple symbolizing the blending of all of the colors of our nation's armed forces. From elementary to high school, it was nice to see our students show so much support in so many creative ways. One of these creative efforts came from Cedar Road Elementary, who organized a parade to honor and celebrate their military-connected students. Thank you to all of our schools who showed their support for this important celebration. Student teachers from across the area got to experience what Chesapeake has to offer during this year's Student Teacher Meet and Greet. Student teachers from various universities and programs got the opportunity to connect and network with different teachers and leaders from our school district and to showcase their passion for education. Twenty-eight current Chesapeake teachers attended the event to share their experiences, as well as advice with the class of potential Chesapeake teachers. It's always nice to see our family grow, and I am especially excited for the new group of teachers who will continue to inspire the next generation of learners. Inspiring the next generation of learners and celebrating a love for reading was the name of the game at this year's Battle of the Books finale. This year's battle featured the works of Kwame Alexander, a prestigious author, Grapebridge High alum, and the emcee for this year's tournament, and who attended school with me, I'm pulling out as well. Three elementary schools and three middle schools competed against each other to four top honors, with Grapebridge Intermediate and Grapebridge Middle taking home their respective titles. All six finalist schools were then surprised with visits from celebrated authors Jerry Kraft, Jean-Luwin Yang, and Jen Bishop, where they shared stories and advice with the next generation of literature lovers. Congratulations to all of our finalists, and thank you to all the schools who participated in this year's Battle of the Books. While the Wildcats were celebrating their wins in the Battle of the Books, 24 young women from Deep Creek Middle School were participating in Girls for the Win, an event hosted by Junior Achievement. The educational event allowed our Hornets to visit the Virginia Beach Advanced Technology Center and immerse themselves in fields such as architecture, finance, and renewable energy. Throughout the day, students were able to connect with successful leaders from across the area as they learned about opportunities that await them. Thank you to Junior Achievement for giving our students the opportunity to explore different pathways and for supporting the next generation on their journey to excellence. Five student councils in our district were recently honored for their excellence, receiving the Council of Excellence Award from the National Association of Student Councils. Deep Creek High, Grassfield High, Hickory High, Western Branch High, and Western Branch Middle were among the 10 schools chosen from the state of Virginia as award recipients for their hard work in creating positive school environments and supporting their communities. So out of 10 for the whole state, five of them are from Chesapeake Public Schools, I just want to emphasize that. Please join me in congratulating these student councils on their incredible achievement. To close tonight, I'd like to take a few minutes tonight to thank the members of the school board, who were able to join me at our annual State of the School System address. I was joined onstage by several of our guests, who helped highlight the important work we are doing here in Chesapeake. Through our theme, Building Bridges, Creating Connections, we were able to celebrate the many wonderful people and exciting things that make Chesapeake Public Schools successful. One of those people is our 2025 Pride of the Peak Award recipient, Ms. Brenda Johnson, who was honored for dedicating over 50 years of service to the Chesapeake community. She's a current member of the Chesapeake Public Schools Educational Foundation, former Chesapeake school board member, past PTA president, and a passionate advocate for Title I schools in the South Norfolk community. Additionally, I'd like to thank our student media representatives, one from each of our seven high schools, who joined us and captured some of these great photos from the event. If you are unable to attend, no worries. You can re-watch the event in its entirety on our YouTube channel. I'd also like to thank the Chesapeake Public Schools Educational Foundation for hosting, and all the sponsors and attendees whose generous support make our work possible. Take a look at some of the highlights. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. This completes my spotlight for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Cotton. Last on our agenda this evening is board member items, and I'll open with a brief one. I wanted to take a quick moment to update the public regarding two recent directives issued by the United States Department of Education. The first directive required school divisions to certify compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits discrimination based on race, color, or national origin. The second directive concerned compliance with Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, sometimes known as FERPA, and the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment, PPR, which protects student privacy and parental rights. In response, the Virginia Department of Education, acting as the state's education agency, directed all local school divisions, including Chesapeake Public Schools, to sign, to submit signed assurances of compliance. Chesapeake Public Schools maintains a thoughtful and deliberate approach to policy development. Our policies are intentionally crafted to comply with state and federal law and endure shifting priorities at the state and federal level. This longstanding commitment ensures that our work remains steady, lawful, and in the best interests of students and parents, regardless of the political environment. While we are aware that some school divisions across the country have interpreted the federal directives as applying broadly to a wide range of programs and initiatives, Chesapeake Public Schools does not believe these certifications require any change to our current programs and practices. Our division already operates in full compliance with Title VI, FERPA, and the PPR, and our policies are carefully designed to align with legal standards without creating unintended conflicts. Because of this, the certifications we submitted simply affirmed the practices and commitments already embedded in our daily operations. No adjustments to our programs or policies were necessary. To put that a different way for clarity, no decisions or votes were taken in private because no changes were needed to our policies or practice. We remain committed to ensuring the best possible policies for our students and our families, and we simply affirmed that our district is already in compliance. Thank you. Ms. Scott, I think you have a comment?
Couple of quick comments. Thank you, Ms. Weigert, for adding clarity to that. I also want to thank Dr. Cotton for, one, everything that you do, but also, I just want to highlight State of the Schools. Every year, I'm always like, how are they going to top this? And then every year, y'all top it. It's just amazing. There's so many incredible things happening in our schools, and I'm so incredibly proud to serve Chesapeake Public Schools in this capacity. It's just a tremendous privilege. I also want to thank all the applicants that came tonight. It was really nice to be able to put personalities and faces with your resumes. I appreciate your time in doing that. And then lastly, I promised a young woman in our schools a shout-out tonight. Her name is Haley Bishop. She is a junior at the Deep Creek High School Science and Medicine Academy. She spent her spring break with me, spending her internship hours observing ultrasound as we do it in obstetrics and gynecology. She is absolutely outstanding, and I actually believe she might be a genius. She's the second in her class, but she also plays competitive soft pitch, no, not soft pitch, sorry, fast pitch softball. She plays on a travel league, and she also plays for her school. And I asked her, I was like, Haley, how in the world are you maintaining such high academic standards but also playing sports? And she was like, well, I don't really have to study. I just have a really good memory. I was like, holy cannoli, I think you're a genius. But she really was outstanding. She showed up early every single day. She was always anticipating my needs. She was eager to learn and just a really hard worker, and I have no doubt that she's going to be highly successful. So Haley, this is your shout-out. Thanks for spending time with me. I think you're incredible, and you're going to do great things.
Do we have any additional board member items this evening? Seeing none, I will call this meeting adjourned.